Evening, one and all. Thank you for coming to the Bennington Select Board's meeting. It's Monday, July 23rd, and if I can have your attention just for a couple of hours, it'd be great. I'm Tom Jacobs and have the pleasure of being the Chair of the Select Board right now. I'd like to have my colleagues introduce themselves. Chad Gordon is not going to be here tonight. He's out of town. Jeanie.
Hello, I'm Jeanie Jenkins.
Good evening. My name's Donald Campbell.
I'm Jim Carroll.
Good evening, Carson Thurber.
Hi, I'm Gene Connor.
Great. At this point, we normally would have our Pledge of Allegiance, and I see no reason not to divert from that. Would you like to lead us, Donald?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, all. And last but not least, Nancy Lively, who's our esteemed reporter. Thank you, Nancy. We have a consent agenda that was part of the packet that was circulated. It contains the minutes of July 9th, our meeting here, and the warrants which have been circulated as well. I'll entertain at least for discussion a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move.
I have a motion and a second other discussion.
I'll defer to you, Tom. On the minutes, on page three, oh, I didn't write down the line. Okay, it's lines 96, 97.
Got it.
Tom, did you add to the discussion that you assumed the Select Board would be involved in the survey?
Yes, I expected that the draft or the plan of the survey would be presented to us in advance of it actually being disseminated. And it should probably reflect that, right, Stu?
It does.
Yeah.
Mr. Hurd, Mr. Muntz will be compelling the annual citizen survey.
Oh.
We'll send it to the board before we do.
Thank you. I thought you meant we would want to be involved in the development of it.
No, it's really for the management to develop it and present it to us for our consideration.
Okay.
But otherwise, okay. Without any further discussion, all in favor signify by aye. Aye. That's six in favor and no abstentions. Citizens' comment period. We have 15 minutes set aside for matters not on the agenda. And we have Dr. Dundas. I think he's the only one tonight. Good morning or good evening, doctor. It's morning for you, Jeanie.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. Well, I'm here to talk about voter registration. It's going to be an important issue in this coming fall when we have our midterm elections. So I wanted to announce that Greater Bennington Interfaith Community Services is going to start doing some sessions of voter registration. These will coincide with our kitchen cupboard hours. So in total, you all know that, you might know that GBIC, Greater Bennington Interfaith Community Services, has moved to new digs on Depot Street, and it's 121 Depot Street across from Anytime Fitness. So we're going to have actually a total of 11 voter registration sessions that will coincide with the kitchen cupboard hours. So there are going to be five Tuesdays, three Thursdays, and three Saturdays. It's kind of complex, so if you come on a Tuesday, and I want to invite the entire community to come, as well as the kitchen cupboard guests. If you came on a Tuesday, it would be from 5:30 to 7:30. If you came on a Thursday, it would be 10 to 12 noon. And if you came on a Saturday, it would be 2 to 4 p.m. So I'm hoping that we can have a good turnout and register a lot of voters that have not taken part in elections in the past.
Thanks, doctor. It's not long from now, they'll be saying the facility for recreation and fitness is across from the kitchen cupboard, rather than vice versa.
I'm sorry, I didn't get it, Tom.
The essence of it is, you're so well-known and the new facility is so well-done, that pretty soon that'll be the recognized point of reference, rather than have to use a fitness center.
Okay.
Thank you, doctor.
Thanks.
We don't have any other, we don't have any other citizens' comments, do we, Stu?
No.
Okay. The next item that probably will be led by Stu to introduce Jason Booth of Aldrich and Elliott. Stu, feel free to take it on.
Sure thing. Jason is here tonight, and he's going to move to the table. We have done the bid for what I call Phase Two of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade, and I've sent the board the first four pages out of the bid analysis, which is an 81-page document, and I've sent the board the first three pages of a 47-page document on the disadvantaged business enterprise program, which is a federal requirement when you're using federal dollars. And Jason, if you would introduce your compatriot there.
Sure. This is Roger Bergeron. He is the Chief Engineer with the Facilities Engineering Division at the State of Vermont. Roger is overseeing the project from a state compliance perspective.
Great. Thank you. So with that, Jason, I will turn it over to you to outline what you've sent us and what I forwarded to the board, and we move on from there.
Sure. Thank you. We are here tonight to review or present our review of the bids received for the wastewater treatment facility upgrade. As Stu mentioned, we put together a pretty comprehensive document where we go through the bidder's information to confirm that they have a complete bid, to confirm that they have viable bonding capacity, banking capacity. We check references, and we go through the total project cost. In addition to that, we ensure that as part of a complete bid process, that they completed one of the important factors, which is a disadvantaged business enterprise solicitation process, which is part of the bid requirement. So those are the two documents you received in your packet. Kingsbury Company out of Middlesex was the apparent low bidder. Their bid was for, their base bid was for $4,670,000, and they had an ad alternate bid, which was part of the total, the bid schedule, which was $100,000, $100,500. In going through the review of their bid, we did find they had viable banking, viable bonding capacity. They have not defaulted on any projects at this point. Their references were not stellar, I would say, and we have worked with them in the past. We have had experience with them. We do know what the pitfalls are, I guess I will say. However, references in and of themselves are not grounds for a basis of rejection of a bid. They are a responsive and a responsible bidder, meaning they have a complete bid and they have bonding. So we are, we have determined that they have met those requirements and are recommending that the town award to Kingsbury Companies for the base bid and the ad alternate amount of $4,770,500.
Could you just explain to the board the comments that you had addressed or stated relative to the bid? And I go right to 9D4, "Project On-Site Superintendent on Individual Jobs Has Been Inconsistent," multiplied throughout the duration of a single project. Would you just explain what that means?
Sure. So on every project, the contractor, per the contract documents, is required to have a sole individual on the project that is employer of the contractor themselves, not a subcontractor or a sub of a sub. And that individual, that superintendent, is in charge of the project itself, in charge of the contractor's employees, and in charge of the contractor's subcontractors. And so in projects past, we and others have seen where there've been, they've had multiple superintendents on the job, which has been challenging. People have quit, or people have been let go. So there's almost this revolving door, which some of that, we don't necessarily have control over, but what we do have some control over is if they're pulling people off the job to put onto another job. So we can work with the state to maintain some of that consistency, but that has bred problems in the past.
How's that going to be addressed, then? How is that going to be addressed?
So that's something that we address at this point, early on in the job, at the pre-construction meeting, when we sit down with the contractor, to go through the outline of the project and how we expect things to work. They have to present a project superintendent that starts off the project, and when they switch superintendents, if they intended to, they would need to provide something in writing, resume, reason for leaving, and we would need to have some input on that as to whether that's even a possibility for them to do.
Yeah, that's basically, it's a state requirement that we're doing on all our contracts, because understandably, we handle all the State of Vermont's contracts. They handle a portion, a good portion of our contracts and measuring them as a consulting firm for municipalities, but we've seen at broad base that it's not just this contractor, there's other contractors took liberties. So we make it as a basic requirement to have a full-size superintendent, along with a consultant that's monitored for the municipality. The state will monitor that also to make sure that's full suit, so.
Do you share the same concern or a deeper concern based on what you're hearing as far as these kind of recommendations? You probably interact with this company often across the, you know.
Yeah, I do. And generally, in view, it really matters, each project has its own complexity and its own challenges. Each municipality has their own operating, how they do business, and certainly there's different consultants that interact with them. And I see broadly that they're an okay firm as far as a contractor doing business, but it's only as good as the site superintendents on the job. So that's a critical aspect of the firm itself, but I think in most part, they do good work.
Yeah, right, and much of them.
Yes.
It's great that the requirements are, you know, written into contracts and so forth, but is there some sort of penalty if they don't comply, if there's multiple superintendents or if there's delays?
So with respect to the multiple superintendents, in the contract itself, there is no specific penalty. That said, we certainly can discuss potentially holding payment if it becomes something that is an issue that's affecting the project, affecting schedule, so on and so forth. But as far as the contract is written in the contract documents as they are, don't actually identify a penalty for multiple superintendents on the project.
Now, but from our part, from the state's part of it, we will monitor that, and we're a signature line on all these pay requests that the contractor submits, and we don't feel comfortable with what they're doing monitoring. We will make recommendations to the municipality and to their engineer, who's representing them, to hold payment until this is resolved. So we do have some authority to do that.
And they'll be aware of that?
Yes. We would do the same as well. I mean, we would be in, we would be in, working with Stu and his staff, as well as the state. You know, if these issues or if this issue begins to present itself, we'd be looking to address the issue with the state, and whether that be holding payment or, you know, some other type of disciplinary action, we can work through those issues with the state and with Stu.
And certainly would be hand-in-hand if it's a repeated action.
Right.
We will certainly talk to Stu about it and recommend some actions that could be taken. But I don't hope that we're going to go in that direction. I think you really have a very good top-notch engineer firm here, A+C, Aldrich and Elliott. They're one of our leading engineers in the State of Vermont that we work with. I think you should feel very comfortable how they're going to be managing this project. So, rest assured, I've seen their work and how they deal with contractors, and I think you're really getting a good, a good grasp of it.
With Aldrich and Elliott, your experience with this particular company, Jason, what has it been?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
What's your experience with this particular company overseeing a project?
Yep. So we completed a project maybe a year and a half ago, is the most recent project completed with this company. It was a particular project where they had a number of people that left the company. They had some scheduling issues. They had some issues with managing their arrival of equipment in a timely fashion in order to meet their schedule. So there were a number of delayed payments that we recommended in order to address those issues, in order to keep up with schedule.
Did that come in on bid, on contract?
In the end, ultimately, yes, it did. It took longer than expected due to some of the scheduling issues, but in the end, it did come in.
And by what, how long after the?
Well, so there was a winter shutdown in play on that particular project, which is not uncommon to see, especially as you get nearer to the end of the project and there's restoration involved. I'd say that project was somewhere in the three-month range over in time, so.
If we should experience that same scenario, Stu, how does that position us relative to compliance?
Well, the fortunate part, if in fact this does become an issue for us, is that this portion of the project is not governed by the assurance of discontinuance that we're operating under. It's the RBCs that has the assurance of discontinuous issue. So, I mean, Jason and Roger both raised this issue after the bids were opened. We determined that the bid is aggressive enough. It brings us in under our bonding capacity by about $200,000, given all of the contingencies that may or may not occur. So I think we're comfortable. I think Roger is correct. A&E is a top-notch organization in the State of Vermont. We have a very close working relationship with them and have had throughout the development of this project. So we're pretty comfortable with where we are.
So management's recommendation is that we support this bid?
Yes, we accept, we accept the bid and their effort, and that we move to an award. The state is very much aware of all of the contingency issues that we are facing here, and we have found actually the state to be very, very helpful and very cooperative in this throughout.
Great. Stuart, how many other bids were considered complete?
There were actually only two bids.
And was the other one complete?
The other one was complete. It was about $200,000 higher. So when we, when we talked it through, both contractors were similar in what their knowledge and their experience has been. So it wasn't like one contractor was hands above the other. They're both experienced in wastewater treatment project expansions, and we're comfortable with where we're at.
That means a lot, right?
Yes.
So I'm glad that you dug deeply into this. Jason, it's really hard, you know, a $5 million project, almost, to see slow yielding, inconsistent qualities, only acceptable, references are not overly favorable. They can be difficult to work with, you know. That's a lot of...
I agree. I can't disagree with you at all. And, you know, this is, basically, this is a determination of contract award, not specifically, I would say, a recommendation. And there's reason behind moving forward with the contractor. They actually have a complete bid and they have viable bonding capacity. So rejection of them based on references is really not something that you can do without delaying the project significantly, because if you reject one bidder, you potentially run the risk of them filing suit against the town for rejecting their bid and going with a higher bid. You run into eligibility issues, you run into issues with funding if you start going down that road. Roger can elaborate on that a little bit more from a state's perspective. So you're really somewhat tied to going with the low bidder unless you were to reject all bids and rebid the project in its entirety. If you go down that road, you run the risk of these two bidders potentially not bidding. Certainly, you'd be in a different bidding time, you know, maybe if it's in the fall or over the winter. Maybe some of the other contractors that were looking at the project have some availability open up that would drive them to bid the project. But it's all sort of a little bit of a gamble if you intend to go down that road.
I understand, yep, I understand. So that, I guess that question would be then, not knowing the other bid and not wanting to get into that too much, but we saved $200,000, that's a good thing, but it's not a good thing if you burn that riding rough, you know, riding herd on a unruly contractor.
Sure. So to put that into perspective a little bit, there's $200,000 approximately. It's actually a little bit more than that, I think, in available bonding capacity. For the contract specifically with, for the treatment facility, there's also a $250,000 contingency that's accounted for as part of the total project cost for the wastewater treatment facility. So there's flexibility there to address change orders. And, you know, there's going to be change orders, and that's common on every project. And with respect to managing the contractor, that's part of our contract that we already have with the town. So from us, you know, there wouldn't be an additional cost, because that's part of, that's already baked in. That's what we do. That's why we're here. So, you know, it depends on what comes up for change orders, and also, it depends on what comes up from the town. There is some flexibility if things are going well. Maybe on the flipside of this, you want to, you have a couple of things on your wish list that you want to get done at the treatment facility. So those are options, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have anything to add, Ken?
With respect to the competitor, the other competitive bid, you know, what's, just jumping out at me is the comments about Aldrich and the difficulty.
By Aldrich.
I'm sorry?
By Aldrich.
Yes.
Yeah.
By contrast, and the other bidder, did they have similar complaints?
You mean WM Schultz?
Yeah.
Excuse me. So we don't do, unless Kingsbury or the low bidder is rejected, or they don't submit a complete bid, we don't go through and do this deep of a dive on the next bidder.
Maybe Stu can answer that. Can you answer that question with respect to the competitive bidder?
You know, Schultz has been doing some work on the PFOA project. They're one of the contractors. They have contracts one and three, I believe, in the PFOA project. So they're here in the community. From what we see of them, they do a good job. We don't have any experience with them on wastewater treatment facilities, which is why we turn to our engineers in the State of Vermont to say, yeah, these guys can do the job or not. And I think if we are, if we are interested in moving forward, I think this is a very competitive bid. There were a lot of dollars left on the table. I think if we were to reject it, we'd have to reject them both and start over, and we have no guarantee that our bids will be more competitive in the second round, and it does push the start of construction back probably into next spring.
Yeah.
All right. The follow-up question with that is with respect to the problems with scheduling and supervision, is there anything that we can do?
Yeah. As I understand it, that's what we engage Aldrich and Elliott to basically ride herd on this.
That's correct.
And hearing Stu's comments and the State of Vermont, basically, we've got three resources that suggest and recommend that this is probably the bid that we should entertain awarding, unless there are other questions.
That's my recommendation. We really want to get this project underway. We are on schedule with the RBCs. That project is actually moving along at a pretty good pace. We don't appear to be using up our contingency in that particular project, and given the knowledge that we have that's been imparted to us by Aldrich and Elliott and the State of Vermont about this particular contractor, we'll be on our toes as well.
Yeah.
We won't, and I don't think they will tolerate.
Could I have a motion to award the bid as presented? Move that for a second. Discussion now. Further discussion on the issues or even questions to Jason or to Roger.
Well, I think we're walking into this with our eyes wide open.
Absolutely.
You know what you're walking into.
We do.
It seems like there's some issues that you've already thought about how you're going to manage.
Correct. And I will say that they can complete the work. It's not a matter of them being able to do this work or not having the knowledge to do this work. It's a matter of them sticking to their schedule and being on top of it. And again, that's where we come into play and can work with them to do that.
And you added them being slower doesn't raise your price, so that's...
That's correct.
It's already baked in, as Jason said.
It's baked in.
What impresses me is that your comments are not just everything's perfect and this company is the best and no issues ever have risen. I frankly am glad to have that, so that when and if, and hopefully not, you come back and say we're slow on schedule and here's what we're doing about it, then we can respond accordingly. Any other discussion that we might have? Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor signify by aye. We're awarding the bid as, the contract as bid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger and Jason.
Thank you for coming down.
Yeah.
Long drive.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is the Bats Children's Pump Park Track at Stark Street. Who's going to be presenting on that?
I'm just going to introduce Brad DeBoer and Jared Newell and Sylvia Casano from the Bennington Area Trail System. We're going to speak a little bit more about the work that they've been doing for trails and outdoor recreation and some of the proposal that they have for Stark Street playground.
So while they're getting set up, Tom, I just need to say that I'm on the board of the Bennington Area Trail System. I'm the treasurer of that, and I guess I would defer to you on whether or not you'd like me to recuse myself entirely from this or whether I can participate in this since there's no financial gain and...
This is the part for, that the town's going to be overseeing. I would suggest that we would deal with it on a as-voted basis, but I'd just soon have you involved in the discussion.
Okay.
If that's the rest of the boards.
Is the board...
Yeah, there's no financial gain.
There's no financial gain for me in it.
He's going to offer information of value.
Right, yeah, okay.
There's no financial gain, and we'll proceed. The presenters tonight are somewhat familiar to the board, but who's going to take the lead? Jared?
I'm going to start it off.
All right, Jared.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. My name's Jared Newell. I live in Bennington and one of the original founders of Bats, Bennington Area Trail System. We started three years ago in 2015 as sort of an organized group of bikers, hikers, trail runners, and generally people that wanted to see an outdoor trail system, non-motorized trail system in Bennington. In those three years, we've really accomplished a lot. We've organized this a 501(c)(3) nonprofit under the Vermont Mountain Bike Association. A lot of us are mountain bikers, and it was the best parent organization to be under. In those three years, we've built a lot of trails on Mount Anthony in cooperation with Southern Vermont College and other private landowners, as well as the Mount Anthony Preservation Society. We currently have somewhere around 10 miles of dirt, single-track, primitive trails used by mountain bikers and hikers and trail runners. We're a growing organization. We're starting to see people come in from outside of the community, the Albany area, the Berkshires, in for the day to use the trails, and that's really our vision. But also, our vision is to provide something for the community as well, and give the community something healthy and outdoors to do. Mountain biking's growing very quickly across the country and in particular in Vermont. It's increasingly becoming a more family-oriented sport, where your young kids, you know, three, four, five years old, are starting on little balance bikes and smaller bikes. And with that comes this idea of a children's pump track, which I'll let Brad describe, but Sylvia will here.
I'm going to run the...
And Sylvia can introduce herself and talk about what exactly a pump track is.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry if the top of that image doesn't show, but...
We're going to run now.
Okay. And obviously, you can't read the text, but just the visual of the map is just showing where these exist now or where they will be built. So a pump track is not DBMX track. That Willow Park, it is a much smaller scale. It's a... It's a flowing track with berms, so packed corners and features that the pump, it's termed pump because you pull up on the handlebars and push on the pedals and eventually you don't need to pedal and it teaches you how to balance and do different things with your bike in a safe manner. And it's a circuit, so the photo examples there just show some that exist. And now they're tiny from there, but ones that exist in other parks to give you kind of an example. So it's a compact track. And that photo on the right is the one that exists up in Rochester, Vermont, which is a really, really tiny town and it's actually behind the Forest Service in town. And there's one in Wilmington that is new and there's one coming in Montpelier. So we hope to check those ones out this year too and see how those are. So just to give you a actual video so you understand.
This is the one in Rochester. This is in their Facebook page.
Is that a three-year-old?
Eighty-four, eighty-four or five, but you know...
Actually, he's one of my good friend's kids. I think he's four in that page at this time. This was last summer.
So theirs does have dirt and a little bit of wood, but we want to use dirt as, you know, you can change what dirt looks like and it has less maintenance than the boardwalk, but they probably had a reason for adding that feature to theirs, so...
You can see that it has a relatively small footprint. You know, I think this track is sort of L-shaped and it's approximately 100 by 100 feet. We're looking at something a little bit smaller than this.
The one that's on our packet is 40 by 120 footprint.
Right, and that's what we've learned is kind of the standard that people use. So we, that's what we put on there, on our proposal because that seems to be what has been designed and built in other places. I don't know that we... Okay.
Quickly, this is another track. This is a Catamount Outdoor Center in Williston, Vermont.
Click the blue.
But this just goes to show, you know, this rider makes an entire circuit of the course without ever paddling, so this is obviously a slightly more experienced rider. Just to show.
And this was when they had freshly built this, which is why there's a lot of dirt kind of in the middle, but you can do a lot with the landscaping around it too. And they use this at a summer camp because this is an outdoor family center up near Burlington, Vermont. So they have a lot of programming that uses it.
Yeah, they look a bit older than the population you're looking to entertain, right?
We can see all ages using it. It depends. You know, little kids would use it. Teenagers could use it. Adults would have fun using it. It doesn't really matter, but it would be built to, you know, a little kid wouldn't be afraid to use it. So project timeline, our vision, we received a grant from the Vermont Mountain Bike Association that we have to use on a project by the end of October. So we've kind of based our timeline on that. So July coming up, we would foresee having someone come and look at the site. We've already been contacting some folks about that. And then we're in the process of just scoping out what could be possible for materials donations. Early to mid-August, those trail builders who are located in Vermont as well, they have time still to come and build. And building most of the professional work takes about two days, depending on how many people they have. So we would have that happening after we get the design plan and the materials. So September, so kind of fall was our vision for building it. And then with volunteers doing any of the finish-up work and reaching out to any other new people that might be excited about this project to help with any other finish-up details. And then that's our timeline for the actual project itself.
Do you have a schematic of the location of the proposed?
Yes. So this is an overview of the park. So in the, I don't have a laser printer, but the basketball court, is everyone familiar with the basketball court? Maybe Brad can point to that. That's the basketball court. The red circle is the back corner of the property, keeping the rest of the park, which is just about acre, I believe, open for team sports in the green. The side closest to the, this part of the woods would still be green. And then the orange, which is the dotted line that your laser was pointing at for the Stark Street Pop-Up Park project, that was the AARP grant that the town and BRCRC were awarded with other efforts from other organizations. We mulch, put in a mulch path just for that demonstration site. So to see how that felt to people because mulch is reversible. So the pump track connects to that mulch path, which then connects to existing trails on the hospital property. So we think that that is a good placement to keep the other uses of the park happening and to not interfere with those uses. And then that allows people to, then if they want to go on the trail, they can hop on that way.
The location of the pump track, you realize it's in a residential neighborhood and I do see a lot of neighbors here and familiar faces. But the location of the pump track, we've, you know, we've put it in that corner of the park for a reason, you know, behind those two trees to the north of the track would offer some shelter as well as we could put in some ornamental shrubs for any sort of shading. In terms of, you know, why Stark Street for the pump track? Really Stark Street and the trails at the hospital, it's really the start of our network. And there's, the hospital has about a mile and change loop in the woods in the hospital there that's being used by a lot of the neighbors and community. And this, you know, could really start with, you know, getting some kids on this pump track to learn some basic bike skills. And then maybe when they're getting a little bit more comfortable, they could go into the hospital trails. And then when they're rowdy teenagers, they can venture up to Mount Anthony and try some more difficult trails.
And then the other two pictures that are really tiny but under the site overview and then the bottom right, that's from the demonstration day, the pop-up park that was in June. So we had bikes available. Some people brought their own bikes and we just used some pallets. We did put them in a little different spot than marked on our map, but they were used pretty consistently throughout the two days. So that felt pretty good to see people come just to ride on wooden pallets. So not as flowy as packed dirt, but fun was had by all. So the next...
What is the small picture of this park?
Oh, that one, that was just, that's another pump track somewhere else we, it was...
In a park location?
Yeah.
Just to show how it can blend in with the park field.
Is that a model, the one that you're proposing?
We don't have a design, so we're, we don't quite have a model, but that we really like. So that's why we included it. So possibly, yes. Oh, did we have the, did I have the budget slide? Oh, that's on your handout.
One thing that we'd really like to stress is this, we're not asking for any money from the town. This is all being done with funds that BATS has raised ourselves. Every year, we put on a cyclocross race up at Willow Park, which raises money for BATS as well as Boy Scouts and Mount Anthony.
Mount Anthony Nordic.
Nordic. So over the three years, we've, you know, slowly been accumulating some money. We're a nonprofit, so we don't really have a ton, but we do have money for this project. And as Sylvia said, we were awarded a $1,600 grant from the Vermont Mountain Bike Association for this project. So we're not asking for any town money. We would kindly welcome any donations of materials from, you know, local contractors or if, you know, the town road crew had some extra fill kicking around, we'd gladly welcome that. But I do want to stress that we're not asking for any town money, taxpayer money, any of that.
And on the handout, which I neglected to put on the slide, but for cost kind of breakdown, we foresee other donations being like native landscaping, so not like shrubs that would block the site, but maybe would enhance it so it doesn't just look like, you know, a track and then grass, like something to ease the flow. And maintenance-wise, we, since we're volunteer-based, we would take ownership of the maintenance. We don't have, the only additional maintenance that the town might have to do is they might have to use a weed whacker or something around the edges versus just the big mower that they currently use. There's already garbage there as of now. I believe it's still there. It was there last time I looked. But that was there. Possible other things which had been discussed in the past were, is there, you know, porta-potties and things, that's something that we can't provide, but we're aware that that could be a need if we're having people recreate at the site. And we would occasionally need access to maybe water to connect a hose to either water the landscaping or if it were really dry spell like we just had, maybe to just spray the track occasionally. But the type of material that's used is a kind that packs really well, so it's not necessarily something that's going to create a dust storm, so...
Excuse me, is that a sure pack?
That's one option. Usually it's a clay and then a loam. There's two different materials that they usually kind of mix and it depends on which layer. But that is one option, yeah.
What happens if we get like torrential rains?
They create, the first...
Sorry. So that's one of the reasons that we're looking at having professional design consultants come in and look at that. So any trail, whether it's a trail that we design and build up on Mount Anthony or a pump track like this, if it's designed with the terrain in mind and our environment in mind, can be designed to be quite robust. Obviously, if we have a storm like we had last July that had all the washouts, we may have some erosion maintenance to do. But in the context of the normal weather that we see here, the trails and the pump track should be designed to withstand that without any undue extra maintenance.
Stu, a couple of initial questions. Does the town have the capability of the maintenance issues relative to this activity?
Yes, we do. I don't suspect, other than generating perhaps more folks at the site, more parents and children at the site, I don't suspect that this is going to cause us any undue alarm with regard to maintenance. I know that the, when we closed the building that is on the site and turned it into really storage for town records, we removed a bathroom from within. That used to be, we had an ice skating rink at that site in the wintertime. And we're talking about perhaps reopening that so porta-potties don't become the norm at the site. But if you're going to be inviting people to recreate on your property, you should provide some facilities for them. So we're taking a look at that as well. But that, none of that's going to create undue hardship for the town as far as maintenance.
Relative to policing, I know BATS has got a great core of volunteers, but the town does have ultimate responsibility for policing its parks. Do we have the ability to do that?
Yes, we do.
Please, go ahead.
Right, and can...
There'll be questions, but right now we're having a dialogue and then we'll ask the folks to raise questions. Yep. Go ahead, Sylvia.
And I didn't mention at the pop-up park that we had, we did encourage people to come and walk or bike. So we, in the discussions we've had, the parking was obviously an issue because it is a small space. So again, the goal really with the project is to get people more active and a lot of people who are within that neighborhood or beyond, they do have parking options. If they need to park, there's some other ones close by that we can clearly refer them to. And so we're keeping that in mind as well.
Yeah, go ahead, you, sir.
Sorry, I'm just going to squeeze in here. As Stuart clarified, that we did have restrooms at this facility before. And when I was doing the storage for the event, for the pop-up park, a lot of those fixtures are still there. It's just a question of sitting down and figuring out whether we'd just be able to reopen those restrooms with maybe some kind of other entrance. But that is a conversation we would need to have with buildings and grounds about how much work that would need to be done. Because I do think, you know, as we're making these efforts to bring these parks back into, you know, action in some ways, we should do it responsibly and in a way that's fair to the neighborhood as well so that, you know, we're not just resorting to porta-potties, that we do actually have proper, you know, restroom facilities and what have you. But that also that we are fair to our buildings and ground staff because this would be, you know, one more round in the morning and evening for somebody from buildings and grounds to come and make sure that the bathrooms are open and clean or that the garbage has been removed. So I would like that, you know, as we do this, we do that with, you know, while equally supporting our buildings and ground staff.
While you're there?
Let me ask.
Please, please, okay.
While you're there, would you be willing to talk briefly about the Catamount Connections, folks, and what they're doing and some of the surveys they've done and how this fits into a bigger picture of recreation in Bennington and some of the work that inspired you to do the pop-up park in the first place?
Yeah, I mean, I can say a little bit, actually, I can defer to two people here in the audience, Rory Price and Kathy Vogel, who've been working a lot as a result of Rise Vermont, as you remember at the last presentation, to really get the community. And really, it's children, but it's, you know, adults, it's seniors, everyone out and about in town more. I mean, we know that that is something in terms of the physical and population health of Bennington we really need. And our best resource on that front is really our parks as well, especially parks that are within walking and cycling distance. So last, I think, October or November, the Motherhood Collaborative did conduct an online survey and they had responses from almost, I think, 236 families and many of whom actually lived within that kind of two-mile radius of Stark Street Park. And they were looking for, you know, whether it's been the splash pad, whether it's been just parks that they can walk to with their kids. I know that, you know, some of the neighbors definitely came to the pop-up park and we were really pleasantly surprised by how many people did in fact, you know, respond to our invitation to walk or cycle. I know Gene and Jeannie walked over as well to the event. And, but at the event itself, and I can tell you more details about this. I've only got some of the highlights from the community input that we had. We had these dot voting boards at the pop-up park event so that people could come and tell us, like, write down to, did they walk to the event that day? Did they cycle? What kinds of things would they like to do, see? So just some of the highlights were, for example, of the, let's see. You know, one of the questions, what features would you or do you use the most at Stark Street? And actually, the number one response was wooded trails network. You don't like me leaning over this microphone? And the second most popular response was playground equipment and then shaded seating area. So I think, you know, right now, for example, we're just doing the putting the picnic benches under two of the trees. And I think as Sylvia pointed out, one of those trees is slowly dying, so we should have a contingency plan for that as well. But, you know, there were people, for example, what should the town sponsor to improve at the park? The number one response was actually restrooms. Then I would say the second popular response was playground equipment, public art installations. And in terms of like what kind of playground equipment do you prefer? 62 people voted for bike pump tracks and 86 for natural play structures. So I think in terms of like two themes that kept coming up throughout the votes, it was that people did want to see this park, you know, have a restroom, have shaded seating. Because I know that one thing, at least, I don't want to speak too much for people who are sitting here, but I know that, you know, it was nice to have a spot where you could come and sit and, you know, enjoy a snack or take in the sunset or something. But I do think with that comes the responsibility of making sure that the garbage is being picked up, that the bathrooms are staying clean. And that, you know, our hope is that instead of it being a kind of neglected community resource, that it will be one where we come together and get to know each other. resource, that it will be one where we come together and get to know each other. I know there are growing pains in that, so we'll see.
Thank you for that summary. Jeannie, questions?
I think it's fantastic. I think this is really wonderful. I, in terms of the materials, so do you use fill or is it all, is it a synthetic material or what is?
It's usually the, it's like a 30%.
You might have to put your mic around again.
It's like a 30% clay type surface and then like a loam is the remainder. If there were any fill, it might be if there needs to be drainage features that are built in underneath that.
Okay. No, very happy.
Thanks.
Can I just, can I just make a couple?
Yep.
Final, final points and then certainly, so.
Please do that.
Sneak in here a little bit. So my name's Brad DeBoer. I am a founding member and the president of BATS. I'm also a resident of Dewey Street and I have 14 and 12-year-old sons, both of who ride bikes and are actually getting to the point now where something like this may interest them for a short period of time, but they're much more likely to head out on the, on the trails, both at, both at the hospital, on the hospital property and then up on SVC. One of the things that we struggle with a little bit as, as an organization with BATS is a lack of access to beginner-friendly trails. Most of our trails are up on Mount Anthony, which most of you know are quite steep. My 12-year-old, for instance, who is a really strong athlete, has trouble climbing some of those trails simply because of the, of the steepness of the trail. So the, the trail system here can be, that we've built on Mount Anthony, can be a little intimidating in spots for both less experienced and younger riders. So the opportunity to provide something for those less experienced and younger riders as a kind of an on-ramp into a, hopefully a life of outdoor activity, trail-based activity, is something that, that we're looking to gain here. Just a couple of points to stress about the, the pump track that we've proposed. It's got a small footprint and it leaves the majority of the park area open for other use, whether it's just the open space that it is now, the playground equipment that we've spoken about. I know occasionally there's wiffle ball that's played there and things like that. So we're not seeking to take any of the, any of the space that's really used for those activities. We'll really work hard with the, with the design partners and the construction to maintain or even enhance the feel of the park. Unfortunately, some of the videos that we thought were the most appropriate to show you for what a pump track is, aren't the prettiest because those were just built and they weren't grassed out. There were some of the pictures in there that were a little harder to see for, I think, the audience, but we're not envisioning, you know, a gravel pit that kids ride in. It's, you know, a, a path with grass. I think another important thing is if for some reason it doesn't end up being as positive as we think it is, we're not talking about a, an engineered or a built structure. We're talking about mounds of dirt on the ground and that is with, you know, compared to a lot of other things that get talked about here, it's easily reversible. So if for some reason, you know, five years down the road, we decided either it's not getting used as much as, as we think and we hope it will, or it's causing other problems that we are unable to resolve for, for one reason or another, we can, you know, you could bring in a bulldozer and fly it and you could put it back to open space. Stark Street is a great location because it's ridable or walkable for a significant portion of the community. I was one of the people that rode down from my house on Dewey Street with my, with my 12 and my 14-year-olds. My 14-year-old ran, rode down on his, on his own with a friend, so it's, it's accessible. And finally, the ask, I wanted to make sure that we, we got to that. When I was fortunate enough to sit here, I think three years ago, to introduce BATS to the select board, I think one of the, one of the members asked, well, what are you asking for? And at that point I said, nothing, but chances are we will be back. Here we are, three years later, and, and what we are asking for is a resolution from the select board to, to ask the town manager to work with BATS on an access agreement for a portion of Stark Street Park to, to build a pump track. Nothing more.
Thank you. Anticipated the question. Other members of the board, questions?
It would be really hard for me to not support a project that encourages people to be outside, meet each other and do physical activity, so. I have one question. Have you thought about signage? I had never heard of a pump track, so I think there may be some educational opportunities based on any signage that you're considering.
Yeah, and I'm going to plead a small amount of ignorance because I actually didn't see the package that went out to the select board, so I'm assuming it's not in there. But yes, we, we do have, if you go up, for instance, to the trail system at SVC, we have a kiosk at SVC at the, at the mansion parking lot, and we have smaller kiosks or kiosk-type signs that, both at the entrance to the SVC baseball field and by Camelot Village. So we do, we work with a local sign company in town. We'd be happy to, to iron out the details of what exactly those signs need to look like with the town, but yes, we, we do certainly plan to, to post adequate signage, not only what is a pump track and how to use it, but rules of the, rules of the road, for, for instance. You know, the kiosk that we have at SVC does have a fair amount of, you know, respectful use for trails, clean up after your dog, dogs need to be on leashes, all those things that we've agreed upon with SVC, we've put up there.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for presenting and thanks for clarifying that, that you're not asking for funding, which I think is important to just continue to emphasize because we try to be as ethically conservative as we can. But also for, you know, I'm an avid user, you don't know this, but I'm an avid user of the trails and the quality of work you guys have done time and again through a volunteer network, both in signage and access and being mindful that you're trying to engage a younger audience. And I think it's wonderful and just speaks to the work of a lot of different organizations in town. You guys are doing the right thing, so.
Thank you.
Jim?
Well, I'm happy to see any use of our town lands, but particularly Stark Street, because I grew up on Dewey Street and I have many happy memories and funny memories at the expense of my younger brothers at Stark Street that I won't go into. But yeah, the more use there, the better, and it certainly looks like fun. You might get this 56-year-old backside on a bike just to take advantage of that.
I want to be there with the video camera when you have.
Well, you gotta pay for that.
We could probably round up a few bikes to let people borrow.
That'd be great.
Hey, Jim?
Yes.
Stu, questions that are obvious to the neighborhood? Policing, maintenance, loitering, all of those things. How are we going to, as a municipality like any other public park, make sure that it's used appropriately?
Yeah, I, I don't think that's, that's a hard, hard question. We will, we will take care of the park. When, when the Stark Street Playground was much more active and used a great deal for part of our summer programs, we maintained it then and we did a pretty good job. It's when those programs began to die off and we switched their locations to other places that the park kind of fell into some unmaintained condition. So I, I don't suspect that that's going to be very difficult for us.
What about parking?
Parking is, is provided already at the site. I don't anticipate that we'll be increasing the parking there. I, I think there will probably be some opportunities to enhance the entrance and the look of the park with landscaping as we see the use improve. And those things, we have the, we have the staff and the capability to do wholly within the budgets we currently have.
Thanks very much, Stu. That's, feels good to hear. Now from the citizens, if you have any questions of either the presenters or of management, feel free to raise them. Narina, please. I think we're going to have to ask you because the, the board... Yeah, you'll just have to, maybe you can just move to the side a little bit. Our mic deals with the folks that listen on CAT TV and I've heard folks that say that they don't hear anything from the audience, but.
Okay.
Go ahead, Narina. Just introduce yourself.
I'm Narina Gilardi and I've lived 50 years right across the street from Stark Street Playground, so I have seen it evolve in all directions, all times, always. We love it. I think they have done a wonderful job tonight in answering a lot of the questions that we all had today. We expected to be notified of a meeting. We had a, we had two meetings and then it was said to us that we would be gotten back to with what plans were to be had. So we heard nothing. And after the pop-up demonstration, I went on the website faithfully every day to see the results of the survey, which never came out as they said they would. So all of us were just like asking each other, okay, what's going to go on? So tonight we feel a little affronted that we're presented with a fait accompli by you people without having at least informed the neighbors of what you wanted to do. That's kind of an uncomfortable feeling living in a town that I love, because we live there. Our homes are our lives, we're going to retire there. One of my neighbors has been there 58 years. So one of the biggest questions that I have, Tom, is all this sounds wonderful, but you don't live there. And you say the park is going to be open from dawn till dusk. Who's going to come at dusk and tell these people to go home, their mother wants them? Because we'll tell you, all of us, that nights are horrendous there. There's drugs there, there's older people there, and when you said there would be teens on the track, who's going to make them go home at a decent hour so that we're all safe in our neighborhood? We were told at one of the meetings that because Stark Street is a nothing park, that we're on the bottom of the list for the police department to come to us. So if we have a burglar, they're not going to come to us until they've done all the stuff above us. But if the park is made more vital, the police will put us up on the list and come to us. That doesn't make us feel very good about our neighborhood at all. At night, when it's lit up, of course, all night long, so it's not going to stop anybody from going in there. If you put a chain over the driveway, they'll just drive up the wall or something like that. We're open to you people using this park in a way that the children will benefit and our town will grow and we'll all get to know each other and be friends. But you can't forget the vital issue. We live there 24/7 and you people aren't going to be there 24/7.
Mrs. Gilardi, who told you that you wouldn't be on the top of a priority list?
The people who held the meeting to us.
Pardon me?
The people who gave, who had us there for the meeting. It was, and it happened, it was said twice to us. And we're very affronted with that, that.
Well, who's that? But who said that? Who said that?
I'm not going to name names.
Well, were they residents? Were they residents? Is this pure speculation?
Well, maybe. Maybe you should make a point of how we police.
Yeah, I think the issue is, and you've raised very good points, because you sit there and see this park for 24/7. Now we see that this park, which is a community resource, basically being neglected from a lot of different sides. The question that we're really posing tonight is whether or not we can make use of this resource so that benefits the entire community, but also benefits the surrounding folks that live there 24/7. And I think the proof is going to be in the pudding if the board makes this resolution. If this does not work out, if we feel that there's, you know, inappropriate use or there's vacancies or the police are too busy to respond, then we, as a committee and the board of the committee, have a responsibility to address that, and we will with BATS in their, in the membership. But this is an opportunity to, to deal with some of those issues about loitering, folks that don't have, children that don't have anything to do. This will give an opportunity, hopefully, to give them something constructive to do between dawn and dusk. And that's why I think this is a benefit to the entire community and it's certainly no means to affront, especially someone like yourself, who I respect and know for many, many years. So my phone is always available if it comes down to it, if you find that it's not being policed right or it's not being maintained right, then the first call, if you, you know my number, you can call me and I can address them. But I have a comfort that the management, both police and our highway department, can start to put some time and effort into this, into this facility. Go ahead, Jeannie.
I mean, and also, I mean, it feels like this is the fir, this is a great opportunity for the park. I mean, I agree with everything Tom has said, but it is a great opportunity for the park, but it's also not the only opportunity for this park. So, you know, my hope is that while some kids are playing on the pump track, other people will be playing a game of softball on the other side of the field and that the courts will be used again and that, you know, people will go out and picnic. So, you know, I think it's, I think you raised very good points about just, we just need to pay attention to this park that we have not paid attention to in a while and it sounds like to the detriment of the neighbors. So it's not really the increased activity as much as this is an opportunity for us to put it back on our radar.
Some of our concerns are that would there be any kind of motorized bikes that go on this type of thing? So when you have a sign, which we've always had a sign there, please clean up after your dog, but in Stark Street, I was going to come before you and get a petition to rename it the poop park, because people came from everywhere with their dogs and never cleaned up. And fortunately now, we have one of those, what do you call them? Poop bag thing. But I, somehow I worry about the long-term thing of this. Volunteer people are wonderful. Volunteers make our, make America, make us. But it wears thin after a while. And like I said, we live there, so we're going to count on all of you to back us up, help us to live nicely there. Like now you've got no parking along the one side of the street, so now they park on my side of the street, fine. But do you know what? When they're parked here and they can't park there, you've only got room for one car. So I'm waiting for the day when I come home with my groceries and I come up Stark Street and somebody's coming down Stark Street. Who's going to win? Who's going to back up and get out of there? Not me, I live there. So you've got to be realistic in your ideas about, it's a small postage-size park. It's in a small residential area. All of us try our very best to keep our properties up, to do what's right. And so we're going to count on all of you.
We hope to enhance the park and enhance the community, which would be an enhancement to your neighborhood.
Right.
Because we're all in this together, but we also want to make sure that our children have opportunities, which frankly, studies have all demonstrated, are fairly well neglected in our community. This is an option, an opportunity, so we're all going to have to be rowing together, including the neighborhood.
Your, your concerns though are really appreciated and we, we appreciate the civility with which you brought them tonight.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for that. And one of the, maybe one, it went by kind of quickly, but one of the nice points that I think Brad brought up is that this is a reversible, this is a reversible installation, unlike a lot of concrete and pipes and, you know, hardware that might go in. If it turns out that this situation is untenable for the neighborhood, it's very easy to take up and, and put back into a flat space. So it's, it feels to me like a good way for the town to get its toe wet a little bit and make sure that the neighborhood concerns are addressed and also try to create more opportunities for youth at the same time, so.
Narina, what did you think of the pop-up event?
I thought it went very well.
Because we didn't see you at any of the day.
No, I did, I, I, it's very private, but there was a reason why I did not.
But I hope you were able to.
But I could watch you from the, my front window there.
Right.
It looked very nice. And it was something that all of us were trying to tell you people, was that we wanted Stark Street to be a family park. Somebody can come with peanut butter and jelly sandwiches and play cards on the picnic table, jump rope, play basketball, ride a bike. That's what Stark Street's all about. And that's what we hope it will become. But we all have to take care of ourselves as well, too. We have to be safe there. We have to be able to. We have to be able to live there.
So, if I could just add to Narina's concerns, because we have been in conversation from the beginning, and again, I tend to assume that everybody's eagerly watching select board meetings, and that if we're having a discussion, that they do not need to receive personal phone calls saying that discussion is about to happen. But we have stayed in communication. I think some of this was also, it was a matter of where BATS was in terms of their planning for this, whether they'd be ready in time to do this presentation today. So, I think some of that is also a factor. But I would like to say, you know, I think we have a lot of these discussions about community policing and what's making Bennington safer and more active. All urban planning studies show that what makes communities safer is more activity. So, as we have a tendency to jump to policing, I would like us to keep our eyes on what the data is, which is actually communities coming out and being around each other. And I would like to at least share that that's been my priority, and I don't, I'm not ashamed of that.
Thank you, Community Development Director.
So, I'll defer to some of my other neighbors if they have to add more.
Thank you, Narina.
Or take away some, but I appreciate it very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Hello.
Hi. Go ahead, Noah.
I'm Noah Payne. I'm the son of Tim Payne, the principal at the middle school. I live just over on the corner of Elm and Dewey, and I'm an avid trail user. I started building and riding trails when I was about 11 or 12, and I started somewhat, you know, just kind of building. I started building in the backyard, and then eventually I just started riding in the Stark Street Trails. I call them the Frost Drive Trails, because they connect to Frost Drive as well. When I started building there, I recognized there was a lot of glass, a lot of plastic, some odd activity. And then now that there has been more traffic on the trails, more upkeep, I've noticed that there's been a really positive influx in people who are using the space appropriately. And I just wanted to stress that I was really proud of the community in that as more people have used that kind of hospital property, it's looked much nicer, it's looked much cleaner. People are friendly out there. I see people on bikes, kids, all the time. And so, yeah, that one, that's kind of my first point, is that it's, you know, you can look at a lot of data, you can look at, you know, studies, but in our community, it's already happening that more traffic is just good for the community in these parks. My second point is, I've talked to some kids, and a lot of kids are kind of talking about, you know, when kids talk about going to college, they're talking about, you know, "Do I want to live in Bennington? Do I want to, do I want to stay here?" And a lot of people have talked about outdoor opportunities, and I think that something like this pump track and trails is what kids need and what younger people need to stay in Bennington. I think some people are concerned about what Bennington has to offer, and I think that as far as outdoor opportunities go, this pump track is, you know, kind of the epitome of what we need as a community. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah.
Thank you.
Noah, how old are you?
I'm 17.
Thank you for being involved and taking the initiative. You know, it's your example that's so important to what makes Bennington a good and better place to live, and I congratulate you and thank you again.
Well, Noah, before you leave, you know, I saw Noah when he was with his rake and shovel going down Frost Drive to get into the woods to create a trail for his family and friends. And I, I think the trail system, you know, that you started is certainly an indication of what the youth of this community can do. They took it upon themselves with parents and friends to make this a reality. Thank you, Noah.
Thank you.
Other folks that want to comment? Please. And please try to keep your comments brief, because we're a bit over on the agenda. But Pastor Bob, go ahead.
Yes, very brief. Bob Wiggers, and I have four children, ages, let me see here, 13, 12, 9, and 7. And as I was leaving for this meeting tonight, my seven-year-old said, "Tell them I like to ride my bike and I want a bike track at Stark Street Park." And, because we went to the pop-up park and he loved it, and he goes up and, Tommy may see him go up and down the sidewalk on Elm Street, which is, I sort of okay with, but it'd be obviously much better for him to have a safer place, and we're thrilled that it's around the corner from our home. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Other folks? Other folks? Please. Again, try not to be repetitious, but feel free to comment. You're here every two weeks, right?
Yes. I'm Rory Price from temporarily in Bennington, Vermont, as the interim program manager for Rise Vermont. And I was just here a couple weeks ago, just to introduce the program to you. And this is exactly what we're talking about when we speak to amplifying events and opportunities for our community in terms of physical activity, nutrition, and just healthy living in general. So, we have a pretty robust stakeholder group, and I think, and I don't want to speak for anyone, but I think that most of them would be really on board with this, just in terms of being a really equitable opportunity for physical activity for our kids. And I think it would be a great partnership going forward with Rise Vermont in terms of like helmet fittings and safety days, and just making sure that everyone's using it in the designated hours at the right times in a safe manner. So, we're fully supportive of it.
Great. Thank you very much, Rory, for your continued interest in our community. I entertain a motion to, for a motion to the town manager to engage with BATS for a carefully-conceived plan consistent with our discussions tonight for a project pump track.
So moved. Second.
Can I ask a question?
Well, yes. Please. Why don't you step up to the mic and introduce yourself?
I find this intimidating. I don't like speaking in front of people and being televised. So, I would like to know from you, are you planning to have tournaments and such with this track? Okay. I would like to say, since you've had the pop-up demonstration, we've had an increase of people at the park. What's been wonderful are groups of kids on bikes, riding down the street and across the park and into the trails. That I like. I love seeing the kids. I love hearing them, you know, playing and the activities. What I don't like, 9:00 at night, people are pulling in in a car and getting out to play basketball. And they're not kids, they're adults. We need a sign there where people are gonna look at it. They're not looking at the sign that's on the side of the building. Nobody reads that. I am tired of walking over there and telling people the park is closed, because they swear at me, they give me the finger, they spit. I don't need that. I don't, I don't want my tires getting slashed.
There's no reason why you shouldn't be experiencing that. And frankly, the message to our manager tonight is to talk with the police force about maybe a little bit more aggressive patrolling in the neighborhood. But again, as we go back to this, more activity should generate more positive activity.
Well, she's suggesting some more clear signage.
Well, I'm sure that's, that's something for the man, the manager's gonna have to work with that. I mean, let's not micro...
I couldn't tell you what the signage up there is, but in fact, at Willow Park, we contract with an individual to close the gates and to lock the park and to secure the park every night that it's open. And there, the Willow Park is open late, because we do provide lights for one of the softball fields. So, we'll handle the security. We'll make sure that the park is secure, and we'll find an attractive way to do it.
The same invitation that Narina received, is if you find that there are issues that are not being addressed, that's what we are here for, let us know, and they will be addressed. You should not be exposed to that kind of treatment in your neighborhood.
Okay. And people have been parking on the grass over there. It's a neighborhood park. It's not a community park. It's a neighborhood park. By the town's own definition, that means to serve the people within a half-mile radius. Now, obviously, we're not gonna be asking people where they live and saying, "You can't come here." But when I, when I hear this about, "Everybody wants restrooms," well, I guess that means everybody that's answering that question doesn't live within a half-mile, because otherwise they would use the bathroom at home, or ride their bike back home if they really had to.
Stu, do we have a half-mile radius for our parks?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
That's the definition. I got it off the town site for neighborhood park. And I don't object to kids coming. I object to lots of carloads of loud men and people like that at night, and, or any time of the day. They're loud. They're not from our neighborhood. And we don't need to spend money on bathrooms if it's a neighborhood park. I mean, if you can just hook up the ones that were in the building in the first place, it seems like that would be...
Well, that is, that is the thought. I mean, I think having restroom facilities is a convenience to the users of the park, but if the park is closing at dusk, those are closed and locked as well. So, we'll find a way to discourage people from loud, profanity-ridden basketball games. We can do that.
But I noticed in the presentation, all of those pump tracks that were displayed, they were, none of them were in a residential neighborhood. They were out and away from everything. So, I noticed that this one is put over by the woods there. You know, that's, that's kind of good, but I have concerns about it. If you're, if you're trying to appeal to loads of people to come there, nobody's gonna be telling them, "No, you can't park in the grass." Nobody, nobody's gonna tell them, "You have to park somewhere else," like somebody was, you were telling people during the pop-up, that they couldn't come and park there, because it was designed just for neighborhood use, and there's parking for maybe four or five cars, tops. So, I mean, it, I don't want it to be, become something that's, you're trying to, it seems like you're trying to attract hundreds of people to come there, and that's not okay with us. We bought houses on a street that's a dead-end, quiet street with a neighborhood park. We don't want hundreds of people over there and cars parked all over and, you know, trouble.
Well, I think the goal initially was to create pedestrian and bicycle lanes so that people could, coming to the park would be able to ride their bicycles there, that it wouldn't become a kind of a motorized draw for people from throughout the community. So, I, I hear you. The parking is limited there, and we don't intend to, at this point, expand it, so we'll have to control it and ensure that it's used appropriately.
None of us want porta-potties on our street.
I understand that, but that's probably something that's...
It's going to encourage, you know what, is gonna be, there's gonna be campers in the woods, because there's porta-potties and public restrooms. And we already have that, so I'm not, you know, coming up with wild ideas. It already exists. And I've had someone in my basement, and it's frightening. I live alone, I don't, oh, great, and I'm televised and telling this. I, you know, we pay a lot for taxes, and...
Yep. Okay, you know, I appreciate it. We all pay a lot for taxes, and we've heard, I think, your comments, and they'll be addressed by management. If management can't address it, this board will. But unfortunately, I think it's time to move on for the discussion, and we, your comments are much appreciated. So, could I have a motion, or did we argue?
We already did.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Other discussion? All in favor of the motion to direct the town manager to engage in a pump park track? Six.
And a recusal.
Five in favor and one recusal. Thank you very much, folks. And we hope to have a very active, beneficial park and neighborhood. But as I, you know, my number is there. Narina knows it. If there are issues, please let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, folks, and good luck.
Two minutes. Three. Four.
Yeah. We're gonna have a three-minute recess.
Sir Roth, can you show me which plug this worked in? I know we had it up there.
Betsy Rathbun-Gunn is gonna lead us in the discussion and introduce the other members.
So, very good. We know that it's getting late, and we could talk about our presentation for hours and hours and hours. But we're not, but we're not gonna do that to you tonight. But we are really pleased here to present some really great ideas around opportunity so for the REC Center. So, I'd like to introduce Lorna Matern, who is our chief executive officer at UCS.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for giving Beth Wallace, Betsy Rathbun-Gunn, and I the opportunity to talk with you about an exciting opportunity for collaboration between United Counseling Service, Head Start, and the town of Bennington, to partner in a way that will enhance the Bennington REC Center and increase community engagement. And because it's late, I'm gonna kind of run through and shorten very much.
Don't feel, this is really important to us.
No, it is fine.
This is really important to us.
Oh, no, no, we're gonna get the important stuff.
Just because I act like it's late.
We will absolutely get the important stuff in there.
I've been here longer.
Okay, good.
This is also a huge issue, so take your time to do it right.
Fabulous. Thank you. So, I'll just take a few minutes to talk a little bit about UCS, hand it over to Betsy to talk a very little bit about Head Start, and then really the bulk of the time for Beth and Betsy to talk about, discuss the needs, how we can meet those needs, and our vision for this proposal. So, a little bit about UCS. So, for 60 years, actually, UCS has provided a wide array of comprehensive services to individuals, families, and children in the Bennington County community. People who are struggling with substance abuse issues, mental illness, developmental disability, or just friends and neighbors who are struggling with everyday issues. With a combined budget of roughly about $24 million, a little less, UCS worked with 3,000 individuals last year, 1,300 of whom live in Bennington Town. And we employ more than 300 individuals, so we're a very large employer, actually, in the community as well. We offer services through five major divisions: mental health and substance abuse, community rehabilitation and treatment, which works with the chronically mentally ill, developmental services, youth and family services, and Head Start and Early Head Start. For the purposes of the discussion today, just wanted to point out a couple areas that beyond the service that we provide to our community, we also partner with many services and community connections, which we have created and maintained mutually beneficial partnerships for years with other entities within the community, including being able to partner with Southern Vermont Health Center and provide onsite psychiatric consultation to the emergency department. We've collaborated with Blueprint for Health, and we have clinicians that are in primary care offices, 16 of them actually, across Bennington County, and collaborated with supervisory unions across Bennington County by placing clinicians and therapists in the schools to be able to have access to mental health services to our students. We also have meaningful relationships within the community through outreach, education, and training opportunities that we provide, including providing for free to the community mental health first aid training, which gives individuals an opportunity to learn what some of those unique risk factors and warning signs of mental health problems and substance use challenges are in order to respond safely and to be able to support timely interventions. So, we are kind of everywhere in the community, and this opportunity that we're gonna get into talking about just allows us to be able to have further connections in the community and to further support it. And so, I'm gonna have Beth and Betsy talk about the proposal to consider for this evening around how we can further enhance our support to the community and allow for an enhanced community gathering space at the REC Center.
Great. Thank you. So, I thought I'd just take a moment and tell you about Head Start and Early Head Start. A lot of people think they understand all the services that we provide, but they really don't understand how we actually work. We are a federally funded program. This is a unique opportunity, because our tax dollars go down to DC, we know that, and they come directly back to Bennington. We have been in place for 55 years. We are actually one of the first Head Start programs that started in the nation. We started at Bennington College with eight children as a summer program, and we now serve over 169 children, birth to five years of age. We have been recognized for the excellence that we provide. During our last federal review, and we have 1,600 requirements that we must meet by the federal government, we were found in... in 100% compliance. Less than 10% of the Head Start community ever meet that challenge, so we are very proud of it. We recently received a new grant for Early Head Start, and that is allowing us to serve for families, for working families, early childhood services for kids zero to three. And we serve 48 children through that program with four classrooms onsite ourselves, and then we also partner with Oak Hill in Powell and also with the Infant Toddler Center at UCS. This has been a really wonderful program that we've been able to establish here because this is providing the most important resource of infant toddler care for working parents. That's what this grant was all about. This grant was to help us be able to fund programs nine hours a day, 12 months out of the year, to be able to provide childcare, because we know that that's really part of an economic engine that we also need in this community. We need childcare. It's important for us as far as building our business community, and it's also important for us to be able to make sure kids are ready for kindergarten. So, we do a great job with early childhood. The other piece of our program that a lot of people don't know about is the health piece of our program. All of our children are, get up-to-date immunization schedules, they get physicals, they get vision screenings, they get hearing screenings, they get developmental screenings. We have two nurses onsite that make sure that all of our children are up to date with all of their oral health needs, all of their needs. And this is really critical, because we often find every single year kids that can't hear well, kids that have vision issues, and if they've gone on to kindergarten with those issues, it would have taken a lot longer for them to really catch up to the rest of their peers. So, it's really been a critical piece of the Head Start mission. The other piece to Head Start is family well-being, and Beth is going to speak a little bit more about that, but that's what brought us to the, kind of, this conversation to begin with, because we see the Recreation Center as an opportunity for us to be able to expand early childhood services, but also to be able to help build on what we think the potential of the Recreation Center is for the community as a whole. So, we help parents get jobs, maintain jobs. CCV is a great partner in making sure that parents are educated and they're employable, so we really want our families to be able to be totally involved in the community and very productive parts of the society. So, we're here tonight to talk to you about a proposal that we have, to first add an early childhood and youth services component to the Recreation Center. We have some funding available to us that will make this possible, and then we have a broader vision, I need to let you know, a little broader vision, to really look at what the Recreation Center could offer the whole community. So, I'm going to turn it over to Beth now, who's going to tell us a little bit about community input and how we got this far.
I'm so far away.
Sorry, great.
Hi, I'm Beth Wallace and the Family Community Partnership Manager for Bennington County Head Start, and I also grew up in this community. And we've been having conversations about the potential of the Rec Center since I was a kid, and I have to tell you, as someone who's, you know, 13th summer revolves around Tuesday night, teen nights at the Rec Center, this is near and dear to my heart. Some of the conversations we've had have included the Vermont Rural Development Board, YMCA, there's the 2016 Citizen Survey that you all conducted, or the town conducted, and then, most recently, the 2017 Motherhood Collaborative Survey. And this is what we've heard. Bennington needs space for indoor activities, for gross motor activities, that families can bring their kids to participate in in the endless winters like we just experienced, right? It's a reality that not everybody's a skier, and little kids need to expend energy in those winter months. We've also heard a need for updated playground equipment, as I think the previous presenters also cited. We need more opportunities for young children, age birth to five. We need more things to do for teens to help them feel a connection to their community. We know that that's a protective factor for youth and teens, that they need to feel connected, they need to feel a sense of belonging to their community. We've also heard that the need for programs and families as part of developing a vibrant community center is essential, and we've heard that the biggest challenge facing employers is childcare, and that we need to build more childcare capacity in order to attract and retain a young, energetic workforce. The good news is, we have a vision. We also have experience in programming and staffing a multitude of opportunities, and an opportunity for partnership, or partnership with the town at the Rec Center would allow us to bring those services, those workshops, those activities, to downtown and really open it up to the community at large, not just Head Start and UCS families. That's really our goal. So, some of the things that we already have going on, that we have experience providing is yoga, paint with me, kind of like a sip and swirl, but without the sip, you know, kids and parents painting together, literacy fairs, book clubs, board game nights, play groups, outdoor family movie nights, and special programming. We also have experience providing workshops and development for parents and families, including safe sleep for infants, feeding the developing brain, stress management, financial literacy series, parenting series, handling challenging behaviors, gardening and container gardening, and we hope to be able to provide expanded after-school programming as well, because we know that that's a huge need in our community. The other thing that a partnership would offer is the opportunity to bring in some of those activities for youth and teens that would help build that sense of belonging and connection. So, ideas that we could foresee sponsoring would be supervised teen nights, after-school youth groups, pickup basketball, workshops like survival skills. We came up with some fun names for that. Study groups, vision boarding, open studio space, and movie nights. So, why the Rec Center? This map shows the population density around the Rec. Can I, oh, I can't really. Oh, there we go.
One more.
There it is. And as you can see, lots of families already have easy access to that location. It's also within walking distance from the high school and the proposed Putnam Block project, which could offer attractive amenities to future tenants. Studies have also found that property values are likely to be higher in an area where there's a community recreation center offering exciting activities and compelling programs, and that's what we're proposing. So, I'm going to turn it back over to Betsy to tell you a little bit more about how we envision doing that.
So, I wanted to start with the first, the big vision. This is not what we're proposing all tonight, but I think there was a question around, what could we do with the Rec Center and still maintain the open spaces? We know the open spaces are key and absolutely so important to what the Rec Center has to offer, and we also know there's some confines around what we can use as far as space. We know the Morgan Springs sits there. We know that that's a critical piece of the Rec Center property, and we also know that there is that Memorial Park to the side there that does softball. We know that that's also very important. So, this is the big picture. This is the picture if we were going to expand the Rec Center and include additional indoor space, which includes a full gym, upper area that might include fitness center. It also includes, in our first Phase One, an elevator that might go down, so that we would go down, so that we would be, go down or up, that would also be able to access and make use of that lower level. We're really excited about this proposal. Again, it's just a footprint, but we wanted to show it to you to see, to have you see what is possible with maintaining the green space and also be able to expand the Rec Center, to have possibly four pickleball courts inside, additional recreation, maybe a running track indoors, because we know that it's really critical that we are able to serve our community year-round. And for many folks, the winter really provides challenges to be able to find activity space that they can use indoors. So, given that, we're going to go on to what we would consider Phase One. So, Phase One is what we are proposing, is to keep looking at the outdoors, because we know that's critical, and we want to be able to make sure that recreation is improved upon. It's interesting, we just talked about the pump track, but we are envisioning a trike track, and a trike track for us is a small paved area where kids might learn how to ride their tricycles safely. We also want to make sure that basketball outside has a variety of hoops at different stages, so that, at different levels, so the kids of different stages could be able to play. We do a great soccer, pre-k soccer program in the fall. We'd love to be able to expand that and be able to offer that onsite, and we also know how important climbing structures are. And also, there's a small playground right now in the Rec Center, but we'd love to be able to see that expanded, especially a playground that's designed for younger children, infants and toddlers. So, looking at the structural space, and it was hard to find a picture of the Rec Center online, but anyway, what we are proposing here is about 5,000 to 7,000 square feet. Again, this is a footprint that we're coming to you to take into consideration. That would have some open space inside to have a variety of use space that we could use, and also would provide four classrooms. Those four classrooms would meet the need for both early Head Start and for Head Start, but also be open to the community, because we're not trying to just make this a Head Start program. We know how important it is to combine our programming and make sure that this is offered to a larger group than just the Head Start group. What I'm so excited about, you know, buildings are my thing, so I get very excited about buildings, but anyway, is that if you remember what the entrance of the Rec Center looks like, you have to go all the way to the side and get in. We would propose, again, expand the, you see where the arrow is, the front entryway. So, there's actually a real entry into the facility. And you also see that we are proposing a drop-off place here that will enhance the, be able to, parents could drive up, drop off, they wouldn't necessarily have to park their car and come in, but also for security reasons for the Rec Center. Right now, if you drop a child off, they have to go around to the side of the building, and you lose visual contact with them. You don't even know if they've made it in half the time. So, we're proposing really looking at the Rec Center and changing kind of some of the entry points, but then allowing us to build on the side, where the windows are, an additional facility that would house, again, four early childhood classrooms. The other really exciting part of this is that we would love to be able to put in a commercial kitchen. We do a lot of cooking classes, a lot of different events around using garden space and farm-to-school activities, so a commercial kitchen that might be open to the public at times to be able to be used would also be very exciting. And we, you know, again, Jeff Goldstone has helped us design these plans. He sees some, you know, benefits of having a hallway where you might be able to look into the pool area. We've tried to keep the pool the heart of this facility, and that has really been very important to us. Everything we keep talking about is how does it impact the pool, how does it work with the pool, how does it benefit the pool? So, again, you know, again, these are just designs to kind of think about going forward with. And a multi-purpose activity space, which is really key. So, the second phase that has potential, again, we're here to talk about the early childhood piece, but I thought it was important to see how we might be able to look at the whole piece, was that we would look and see about having a multi-court gymnasium and possibly an elevated running track. You know, it's really, if you go over to the Keen YMCA, this is wonderful running track where parents with strollers are in the slow lane, the runners are in the middle lane, and, you know, the really fast runners are on the outside lane. It allows people of all ages and stages to have activities indoors. And we're really, you know, thinking about this in a multi-generational way. The wonderful piece about UCS is that we serve clients literally now from birth to death. UCS is really one of the only agencies in this community that really works with folks from all their ages and stages, and I think that's really an important piece, and how could we bring seniors into this? And again, the schoolagers and teens are really important. Our first proposal would include an elevator, as I said, so that therefore we'd have access to the lower level. Preschool children cannot go in the lower level. We have to have that great exits for fire safety codes, but other folks could be able to use that lower level if it was designed correctly. And again, the pickleball courts, because I know how important that is, and I don't say that lightly, because I do think it's really important. And we also see that there could be improved pool seating and viewing areas. Right now, when the swim teams use that space, sometimes I've heard parents are in that space for up to six hours, sitting on that little ledge, and it can be cold, it can be hot, kids are taken out of the pool, they have to rest. So, looking at how that pool is used safely and adequately is also really important. So, what can we do right now? That's the big vision. I'm bringing us back to today. So, what we can do right now is that we have some financial resources. We are not coming here today to ask for the town for funding for this. This is federal funding and some state funding that we can put into building this early childhood addition onto the facility. So, that we know we have today.
That's Phase One.
That's Phase One. We have program and staffing, because we are relocating one of our, the program within one of our facilities to the site. So, I staff already hired. I have kids already in need. We are ready to go. And we have great facility development and investment. UCS has 17 facilities in town here, and they maintain every single one of them in great condition. So, we have a whole facilities team that's ready to go with us to be able to help us put this in place. And that will also mean for ongoing upkeep and maintenance, and we will build into our budget for this piece of the facility, ongoing care and maintenance of this facility. So, again, we're not coming to the town and asking for additional dollars. That's already within our grant and what we would expect. So, a timeline. It's going to, you know, be a tight timeline. I understand that, but we are very optimistic about where we can go from here. If we are seeking a resolution tonight for the board to approve the planning process, what we'd like to do is spend the next couple of months making sure that we have funding secured, that we have all of our ducks in a row when it comes to permitting, initiating the process, and finalizing the planning piece. It's also important that we go through something the federal folks call 1303. They want to make sure that what they're putting their money into makes sense as far as they're concerned and from the community. So, there's some paperwork and some actions that we need to do around that. Then spend mid-winter planning, going out to bid, because this has to follow all the federal procedures that you're all very familiar with, and then hopefully break ground in the spring so that we can start programming in the fall of '19. So, it's somewhat of an aggressive timeline, because the funds that we have available are time-limited. If I do not come up with a project that I can assign them to, you know, they have the right to say, "Let's return the funds." So, they know about this project. They've encouraged me to go forward with this project, and they would like to have the funds stay here in Bennington and be used for kids and families. So, again, that's the big picture with the running track, but today we're just talking about early childhood services.
You know you have a choir here.
Yeah. Just wanted to give you, so, you know, again, I think it can be a great partnership, and thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
We're going to have a number of interesting questions and exchanges, but what kind of dollars are we talking about with Phase One?
We have right now set aside between $850 and $1 million that we can put towards a project of this size. We don't know what this project will cost yet, because we're just getting to this point, so I don't want to be quoted that it said was going to cost this and it changed, but once you give us a resolution to go forward in the planning process, funding and securing of that funding and going forward with the planning of that funding is the first step in this proposal.
We also expect that the project would cost more than the $850 to $1 million that we currently have, and we know that that's part of what we need to be, working with our CFO, working with local lenders. We appreciate that we're going to need to be looking at whatever mortgage it may be on the rest of the funds, or, you know, implementing different phases, but we do realize that that's not enough, but it's a fair amount.
Does the fact that we have a bond scenario right now with the Rec Center- Does the fact that we have a bond scenario right now with the rec center impact any potential plan with UCS?
Well, our bond at the rec center will be retired in the next fiscal year. It does not, because UCS is proposing to construct, own, and maintain these facilities, it will not impact the town's bond position, nor will it draw dramatically on town funds for the operation and maintenance of these facilities.
But the planning is still preliminary as far as the project is envisioned, but as far as use of the facility, infrastructure, that's all to be determined, right?
Right, yeah.
And all the measures.
Yes, I mean, it truly is gonna be a very interesting, the lease arrangement will be truly very, very interesting, because we are talking about buildings that will be somehow attached to the existing town facility that will be owned and operated by a different entity, United Counseling Service. So it's, as much, I think, part of the planning process to design the facility is going to be to design the lease that makes sense to the municipality and to UCS.
Do you folks see phase two as having UCS involvement?
Yes, I think part of what phase two will bring about is really looking at bringing in more of the community, bringing in particularly around teens and working with groups around teens, you know, ACT is here, Rise Vermont, we see that being a partner and coming in and using the space in the facility and just making it more of a multi-purpose community space. That would involve UCS, but not necessarily, we, I mean, we could see it as a place of even being able to provide services to the community, but it's really beyond that.
The stakeholder is gonna be the community itself.
Absolutely.
Where the first phase is really UCS.
It really is Head Start, UCS, and then looking at it from a much broader perspective.
Can I ask, so will it look, I mean, I guess my wish would be that it would look fairly seamless, and while there are, while it does require some interesting negotiations in terms of lease agreement, that it would be a facility that you're using during particular hours and in other hours would be available perhaps than, I mean, I would envision the rec center sort of having a master schedule in that you have your, you know, you have your core times, but that part of this relationship is that it looks, from the outside, it looks seamless.
Well, one of the things that Betsy talked about was the commercial kitchen, for instance. We see that being able to be open to the community, to do a learning kitchen, to be able to have, you know, activities there where you can cook, do a family gathering, a community gathering around food, so we see that kind of thing happening. Certainly, any of the playground would be open to the community. We really do see this as a partnership with the neighborhood.
And again, many of you know that I'm a fan of YMCA structure. YMCA has an early childhood component, because they believe you start with the youngest members of our community, and then you build outwards from there. So I do think that it would be a seamless type of building as far as we were able to take it. And maybe there would be two planning committees. The planning committee for the early childhood, and at the same time, a planning committee for the larger project, because part of what we could do, like one of the conversations was, if we put an elevator in, would it make sense for the elevator to possibly go up the next floor if there's gonna be the next floor? So my hope and wish is that maybe planning for both of these go on concurrently. Our commitment right now is the funding and the infrastructure piece for what we can manage, but certainly, we would want to be part of the bigger picture.
And I want to point out, too, that although it would be Head Start in the first phase, those services that Beth referred to, the parenting classes and those kind of things are open to the community. So we would be able to actually provide parenting classes, those other kind of activities to the community, along with providing their kids with really quality childcare during those times. So, you know, bring the whole family, the parents can learn and connect with each other, and the kids can learn and play with each other at the same time.
So it's really exciting, and I should probably admit that first heard about this proposal, I was skeptical, because I think there are some people in this community that really feel like a massive expansion of the recreation center is one of the things we could do to make it a more vibrant and more compelling community. And so, Betsy and Beth took some time with me to kind of talk about this ahead of time, so I've had a little preview on some of this stuff. And I have completely changed my direction. I think now that this is one of those opportunities that's so good, that instead the question is, is there some kind of catch? Are we missing something? This seems a bit too good to be true.
Right.
You know, that you would be bringing this kind of funding in and these kind of opportunities, essentially jump-starting a recreation center expansion with a big slug of both money and expertise and programming. So I really like the thought of all of that. And one of the things, Betsy, I wonder if, you told me the answer, but I wonder if it would help other people to hear, you know, that there are some vagaries that come with federal funding, you know, there are some ups and downs that come with federal funding, and I guess, you know, the town of Bennington would want to be reassured that they weren't left holding the bag, either on a mortgage or on a building or selling something.
And so does the federal government, believe me.
So like, what's the worst-case scenario? How might this play out?
So, with the worst-case scenario, everybody asks what happens if federal funding goes away. That's why I made the point that we've been here for 55 years. We have been here more steady than most other businesses or agencies, so we're pretty secure in our funding. But if it all goes away, the way that this works is there's a federal interest within the facility, because it has more than $250,000 of federal funds. What that means is that if there was going to be a change of structure or change of use of that facility, the feds would have to be able to be part of that discussion and negotiation, so that it maintains its premise for kids and families. What they want is to make sure that programs are not using this money, building these new buildings, selling them for a profit, gosh forbid, and being able to do something else with those funds. They want to make sure, secure, that this funding is going for kids and families in the community. And so, this is something they've done around the nation. It does mean that there's a federal interest in it, again, because the feds want to make sure that they have secured their investment in the community, and that it doesn't turn into something else in the worst case. So I would guess that it would turn back over to the town for the town to use as it sees fit.
Yeah, so that was very reassuring to me, and I thought that was something really worthwhile. The other fear I went into the conversation with was that we would be using up the prime real estate that could be potentially a future recreation center for childcare. And I think childcare is one of the most critical things we could be doing for our communities, so I do think it's a very important need, but this also feels like the kind of recreation hub of our community. And I hadn't seen this design during our conversation, but in looking at it, I'm struck by how little impact this really would have on the overall site. So you're talking about adding a tremendous amount of programming with some very small impacts on the community.
Yeah, I give Jeff Goldstone a lot of credit for being able to figure out how to fit it all in.
Yeah.
You know, there might be adjustments here and there, again, it's just a footprint, and we want to make sure that people understand that. But we were really clear that we didn't want to lose the softball field, or Morgan Springs had constraints around.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. You've all done great work on it. And I guess just, Tom, more to the board, you know, we have this policy, not policy, but tradition of sort of doing things in two votes, but this is really preliminary.
This is basically, enter into an agreement to move forward with the planning for the early childhood and youth families expansion. There's not a commitment, because we haven't got any commitments the other way, so there'll be the two-hairings process, but we can't even get off the.
So when we get to the lease point in September?
Yeah, or some point.
That's when we'd probably have a, yeah.
Plus you want to see.
So the community would have adequate, they would, the committee would have adequate opportunity to weigh in if they felt trepidation about this at that point.
Exactly, we can't even get to the community without saying, the board, are we comfortable with making the commitment to pursue the planning process? Folks over there can't do much without having the board say yes for the community, please move forward, because this is an exciting adventure that we could enter into together. But as far as commitments and negotiations and all of those things, you know, management's gonna have to have that, and the community's gonna weigh in.
Yep.
Because we'll want to see the real plans.
Right, exactly.
Because as much as, you know, the phase one is so exciting, I would just love to run simultaneously the phase two, maybe not the same track here for construction, but to have that going simultaneously for the community to discuss and be involved with.
I think it would make a lot of sense, and it also would allow us to be able to think around some of the particulars about programming, you know, again, when you're getting into heating structures, water, all that stuff, you need to be thoughtful of what's going on in the future, so you don't have to do things twice.
So your timeline works if we give you, if tonight we all felt like this sounds like a good idea to us, but we'd need you to come back and go through a sort of a formal process of adopting a lease or something like that, that timing would work for you to do that in September?
Yep, it would have to be at least a 99-year lease, because the feds want to make sure that you're committed as much as they're committed to funding it.
But again, if something happens to you, it probably would come back to the town.
Right, that's true, right.
Okay, that's all for me.
Thanks, Tom.
I think it's fantastic. Why aren't you done yet? You know, there are quality of issue, or quality of life issues that this addresses. Classroom space, having a commercial kitchen where events can be sponsored below the running track, and the indoor running track. I mean, it's fantastic. You won't see me running around.
It could be a walking track.
A trike course here. I think it's a great idea.
He'll be on the track.
I noticed you kind of baited us a little bit, didn't tell us the number until the end there, $800 to $1 million, which was wonderful to hear. Phase one related dollars, so that $800 to $1 million covers phase one.
For phase one, right.
And then the phase two funding, is there any access to federal funding for that component?
We'd have to look at the various opportunities. I mean, Head Start has funding to serve, you know, early childhood, but if we are running two planning committees at the same time, there might be, and I've been talking to a variety of folks, from the Vermont Community Loan Fund to Vermont Community Foundation, there might be some other funding that might be available, and also for the town to discuss what they want to invest in phase two.
I just was curious, because you can talk about simultaneous phases, the potential of, you know, we're jumping to like, way down the road, but I just, I mean, it's.
But a piece of this, I think, is that, you know, I mean, there has been a discussion for a long time about how to build out the rec center, working with the Y, which is completely complementary to what we're talking about right now. And, you know, and Betsy has had a vision for as long as, you've had visions as long as I've known you, but. But, you know, but it really does make sense, because this does sort of jumpstart, it feels like this jumpstarts this process in a way that we've been stuck, so why not, at least plan?
Yeah, I hope, I mean, not just in finishing up, this is amazing information, like, very rarely I'm speechless, but you did come in here and say about a million dollars in grant funding.
Put into the recreation.
Yeah, put into the rec center. Those guys live on a shoestring budget, I mean, both the VARs, many times, you don't give them much to spend, but I'm in there all the time, and it's incredible, really, that's what I say.
But I'm sure that Stu is very unhappy to hear about a million bucks not coming out of the taxpayers' pockets.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I don't know.
Can I go ahead?
But I, when UCS approached the staff, all kinds of things go off in your head as to why this isn't a good idea, but by the time we got done with our first conversation, I think we were all pretty enthused about the opportunity this presents to the town and to the community.
Well, why this wouldn't be a good idea did not pop into my head, not even close. But anyway, yeah, this is great, and I don't know if we can tolerate any more good news tonight. This is just becoming really difficult. It's really crazy.
Ready for a motion to move forward on?
Make a motion to move forward to a planning phase, yeah.
Further discussion? I think it's great, I'd love to see the second floor, phase two.
I put it back up there on the screen, just in case you guys needed to look at it one more time.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion. Six in favor, and there's no opposition. Thanks very much for this excellent presentation.
We look forward to bringing it back to you in September, thank you.
Great, thanks. The next item on our agenda, believe it or not, is the town manager's report.
And tonight, thank God, I have nothing to present to you on the manager's report.
Oh, can you update on the bathrooms in the rec center? Are they in working order?
That I couldn't tell you. I don't, I imagine that they are.
Stu, then if you would like to make, have a discussion on the tax rate, 2019?
Yes, if I could, and this, I think, also is good news. I'm proposing to the board that we adopt a general fund tax rate of 68.49 cents, which is an increase of 1.02 cents on the general fund, an increase to the highway fund of .006 dollars, which is six tenths of a penny, to 39.07 cents, and an increase in the village fire department tax rate of .004 dollars, approximately four tenths of a penny, to 8.4 cents. The total increase would be 1.99 cents, less than two. You may recall, we projected a 2.27 cent increase in the tax rate at budget time, but we saw some increase at work in the grand list, and some of our other revenues came in slightly higher, which leads to a reduction in our projection. The new tax rate in total would be $1.01.596. Those are the properties within the former village of Bennington. We don't yet have the rural fire district tax rate set. When that is set, that would be a slight change for the rural fire district. They tend to be slightly lower in their fire department tax than we are, so I suspect that they'll be within our range. The really good news is, is that Bennington is one of the towns in the state of Vermont that will see a decrease of a little more than three cents in the education tax for the homestead property this year. So those folks out there who pay taxes to Bennington, not the village of North Bennington, but the town of Bennington, will see a reduction in their tax rate this year.
That's interesting, because we're one of the, how many of the towns are having a reduction on the homestead?
I think it's around 30% are seeing a reduction, yes.
Others are having an increase.
Many of them are.
Yeah, yeah. So that's pretty attractive for the Bennington taxpayer, homestead taxpayer. So, do you need, other than a motion to separate as?
A motion to approve the rates as presented would be fine.
A motion?
A motion to approve that rates as presented.
Other discussions? It is what it is, and thank you very much.
Yeah.
All in favor, signify by aye. Six in favor and no opposition.
Thank you.
So we just have to take a quick pause, though, just to say, it's great that the state rate is down, but it's really wonderful that the local rate, it's a one-time thing, it's really great that the local rate is going up by less than 2%, so I know it's a lot of work to keep it that way, and thank you.
You're welcome, but I think the staff works very hard with their presentations to the manager's office, and of course, the board works equally hard to make sure that we don't get carried away.
Okay, other business. Jean?
No, I just think this has been a great evening.
Donald?
No, I'll sit.
No, I think both Jean and you said, you know, I mean, it was such a good feeling, I want to caution.
I want to caution them, they need Narcan. It was so, so good.
This is just one meeting.
I want an overdose.
This is just one meeting, and, you know, the price is you have to be paid, and there are no free lunches. We have a need for an executive session for material or discussion that is not ready for primetime relative to a contract. So I will need a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor? We are in executive session after a four-minute break.